Welcome to the Orlando Sentinel Editorial Board interview for Seminole County School Board District Four, which oversees the education of more than 63,000 students and has 7,000 employees at nearly 100 schools. Today we'll be talking to Robin Dellinger, formerly an Assistant Superintendent and Middle School Principal, and Carl Tipton, who's been a teacher and coach and currently works as a school resource deputy. And we'll dive in right in with the first question. The Seminole County School District received an A rating again this year, which is certainly worth celebrating. And there are some tremendous success stories. What should the school board do to keep this rating and improve those schools that are rated C and below? And we'll start with Ms. Dellinger.
Okay, so I'm really happy for the district that they achieved this recognition and remain an academically high performing district. What I think will need to happen is they will continue to pursue what is called sometimes a continuous improvement process, whereby they look at all of the data and see where are areas to improve. And of course, if when you're looking at our C schools and some of them are fragile Cs, they'll definitely want to be focusing on that, making sure that those schools have the resources that they need. So I think there are some areas for improvement. When I looked at the data as compared to last year and the previous year, when they had all of the components in the grading system, there are some areas of improvement. First of all, of course, reading, improving the proficiency rate in reading and math. But it looks like there's a lot of gains in the lower quartile and that type of thing. So I believe that what they need to do is make sure that they put their resources in the areas where you have the most vulnerable populations to maintain and improve those C schools. I can tell you that the goal is that every school will be an A school if at all possible. Because what that tells you is that students are learning and that they are making progress. So I believe that the district will look at those schools, make sure they have the resources that they need. And then they will also determine what will be the focus. Will it be science? Will it be career and industry certs? You know, these are areas where you can continue to improve in your performance. Obviously, all of them are, but they'll be looking specifically so that they can prioritize the resources that are available.
Thank you for that, Mr. Tipton. Same question.
Yeah, just amazing job by our teachers and staff superintendent to continue with our A rating for our schools. I think that, you know, testing, preparing for the testing is going, is continuing to do a wonderful job. If you look at the stats, elementary school wise, we only, we had about 54% of our schools receive an A rating. Middle school was 33% only that received an A rating in our middle schools. High school was almost 70%. So I would really like to see middle schools, you know, grades go up. And I think, I think that, you know, I've been in, you know, I've been in the high school for so long. I think the issue with middle schools, it comes down to me is the learning environment, especially in middle schools. I think that not so much fixing curriculum or testing issues. I think that we've got to fix the, the learning environment issues. I think that in middle schools, we have a lot of disruptions happening. We got to enforce the, the entire code of conduct. We've got to get a stricter cell phone policy. I think that's what's causing, especially in middle school, for some of our schools not to have such a higher rating in our middle schools. Elementary schools, reading, 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 research based reading programs. We got to keep, we got to keep looking for new and innovative ways to improve reading in elementary school. That's the key. You know, we're, if you look at our reading scores, what, 67%? We just, we went up a little bit, but still you're looking only at two out of three students that are, you know, reading at grade level. So really big advocate of innovative, research based reading programs in elementary school as well. Middle school, like I said, more of it, I think it's more of a behavior thing. We got to get a discipline under control in middle schools to get those grades up in our middle schools.
Thank you very much for that answer. I'll move on to the second question. That's not the only area that rates Seminole schools as above average. I know that U S News and World Report shows that among high school students, only 59% are proficient in reading and less than half are proficient in math. What should the district do to improve here? And we'll start with Mr. Tipton.
Well, I mean, like I said, I think improve our reading scores. We got to go back to elementary schools where, you know, where it starts. We got to continue to do, like, you know, just said, innovative, research based reading programs. You know, math scores, same kind of, same kind of thing. But if, if we implement at the high school level to get our reading scores and our math scores up, what I want to push for is, one of my initiatives is cell phone policy, changing our cell phone policy. And I would say go to a very, very strict cell phone policy, much like Orange County has. And then I think when you do that, what you could do is you can incentivize the use of cell phones during a school day. A lot of our media centers aren't being used as much. We've gotten away from hiring media specialists. Sometimes our media centers and all of our schools are almost like a ghost town nowadays. So what I would like to see if we can implement Orange County's strict cell phone policy, incentivize our English classes, our math classes to maybe once every two weeks, once every three weeks, use, go into the media center, do some, some, you know, just old fashioned when it comes to reading, just checking out a book and reading for 45 minutes, 30, 30 minutes, then answering a few questions. And then what happens is when you, when you do that, you get to use your phone for the next 10 or 15 minutes. Only time you can take your phone out during the school day. Kind of incentivizes reading at all levels. Same thing with math, you could do with math classes as well. Some kind of, some kind of course or curriculum or application on the computer, working on math. You score 80% or higher on that, boom, you get to take your cell phone out for, you know, 20 minutes at the end of that period. So I like, that's, I like kind of that idea because it kind of goes, coincides with my, with my cell phone policy that I want to implement at Seminole County schools.
Thank you for that, Ms. Dellinger. Same question.
Well, in my opinion, improving math and reading scores come down to the instruction that takes place in the classroom. Seminole County has many resources available to them. And so the way to improve outcomes is to make sure that the processes are all in place, that student, that teachers intimately know the data of the child in terms of how they are doing in reading and math, and then utilize those resources to their best advantage. And that means making sure that you've got appropriate conditions for learning in the classroom, that kids feel comfortable there, that they are engaged in very rigorous instruction, that the appropriate resources are used, and then also that those students that struggle in a different manner, for example, maybe a lower performing student that may be deficient in some area is given those resources to improve their performance. So it's about utilizing the materials that teachers have. And the district has lots of materials, all adopted instructional materials, lots of support materials, and then using them effectively based upon what teachers know about their students to make sure that they are improving the instruction for those students. So in my opinion, improving those scores takes making it a priority, making sure that the resources are there, make sure that the teachers receive the support that they need in terms of perhaps management or even perhaps coaching instruction and strategies and that type of thing. And so when you prioritize your resources and you put a real intense focus on those things, then scores do improve. So I think that the focus is on instruction, conditions for learning in the classroom, and very carefully making sure that each student has a plan for improving their achievement levels.
Hi, I wanted to jump in with a question that is perhaps one of the biggest challenges that they, um, school boards across Florida. And that is recruiting, retaining, and recording teachers. Seminole County doesn't have as much of a problem as other counties do. But, but I wanted to get your, your take on, on this really, really difficult question. And Dellinger, could you start with you?
I think it's a big problem. Having been a principal, I recall the days when I had an opening when I might get 100 applications for one position. Nowadays, if you get three or four, you know, this is what I hear from principals. So it is a big problem. So part of it is retaining the teachers that we have and then also recruiting teachers. Seminole County has a lot of initiatives that they do for those things. But when I talk to the principals and teachers that I know, what they say is, one thing is take things off our plate, help us have respect, support us when we have challenges, and then advocate for us with the legislature. You know, so that is something that I think is critically important, that we join with our teachers and, and really lobby heavily with our legislators and our governor and the Department of Education to make funding teacher salaries a priority. And, and it's wonderful that we have improved salary for new teachers. But because of the compression issue, many of our veteran teachers or even teachers with 10 years experience, but are really kind of pushed there in the middle. And so we, we know that we have the ability to fund this, so we do, we have the will. And that is what I think that our teachers need the support of the district to do that, which I know that they have. But I think that needs to be a big priority. I would like to work with teachers, you know, we talk about taking things off of our plates all the time, but rarely does that happen. So we have to be very intentional, engage teachers in the conversations. What is it that we can do to support you the best? When I talk with teachers that I know, they say, take some of this data analysis off our plates. They say, take some of these administrative tasks off our plates. Give us good coaches so that we can help have support. So those are the kinds of things that improve their working environment and make them feel that they are supported and respected. And also I think we need to work on improving our relationship with our community so that they have the respect for the teachers that the teachers deserve.
Yeah, I, I come from a, I come from a family of teachers. Teachers are big on my heart. My dad was one of the first college professors at Seminole State College in 67. My mom was a teacher. My sisters are current middle school and high, and elementary school teachers. I was a teacher for a couple of years in high school, so got a passion for teachers. So sad that Florida ranks 50 out of 50 when it comes to teacher pay. So need to get that fixed through Tallahassee, through our, through our district. But when you look at studies, they show that teachers are leaving because of poor pay and benefits and also discipline, lack of support from administration, lack of discipline in the schools. I see it all the time. I'll be at my high school and I'll see a teacher come on board for, for two, two months, three months, and then they're gone. What happened to that teacher? Well, that classroom behavior was out of control. They couldn't, you know, some of it's probably teacher management skills. But again, that needs to be taught by, by a coach when that teacher gets hired. So the second pillar of my platform deals with discipline. Got two initiatives that I would like to push through if elected. Number one, I mentioned before, the cell phone policy. I'll walk around my hallways any given period and I'll see many kids making TikTok videos in the hallways, not in class. Cell phones are out of control. They're, they're distracting kids, they're disrupting learning environments. Teachers are constantly having to tell the kids to put them away. Heck, when I was a science teacher, I put beakers on my desk. Every kid had to put their phone in a beaker so I knew where the phones were because I was going to get that under control. So that's one week. So adopting a, a cell phone policy similar to Orange, similar to Orange County's would definitely help discipline. And in my experience here, boots on the ground in the high school. Second of all, enforcing the code of conduct. We got into a place in our district where we're just picking and choosing things to enforce. And what happens is you're creating an atmosphere of disobedience in your school. We are not enforcing the entire code of conduct. When you don't enforce the small stuff, creates big problems, the broken window theory. And that goes into our classrooms. I hate to be a first period teacher nowadays. You've got kids walking in all times of the morning, knocking on doors, disrupting first period class, disrupting the learning environment, again, because of its lack of discipline. So we've got to get to a place where we're enforcing the code of conduct in its entirety, coming out hard in the beginning of the semester. You come out hard, I promise you, in my experience as a coach and teachers, you ease up and you got less to enforce as, as the semester progresses. And then again, cell phone policy, got to get that under control. Look at Orange County, look at the news articles, two things that came out from their, their policy, they're succeeding there. Great things are happening. I want a policy similar to that to retain teachers, to keep them, hey, you fix, we can fix discipline. Teacher's passion is to teach. They will put up with poor pay and benefits if we can fix the discipline component. Nine out of 10 of them will do it, I know it.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton. We would ask that you both keep your, keep your answers to the neighborhood of two minutes. But on to the next question. School Superintendent Sarita Beaman, has been on the job for about two and a half years now. Please assess her performance. And if there was a vote to retain her, how would you vote? And we'll start with Mr. Tipton on that.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of meeting Sarita a few months ago. We sat down for lunch, had a great meeting, shared with her my heart, especially for kids, especially for at risk kids. She has the same, same kind of heart and had an amazing meeting with her. I look forward to working with her. I look forwarding to be an, forward to being an ally, not an ally of hers. Of course, the superintendent works for the school board, it's not the other way around. So of course, if there's, I want to, I want to put my arm around her and work with her. When I, these issues and these problems I see in the schools, I don't want to attack her or, or I want to say, hey, let's, let's work together. How can we fix this? What can you do? Hey, we're still an A school district. She must be doing a fine job. I would not vote to, to fire her right now for any reason. Like I said, I look forward to working with her. I think we have similar hearts when it comes to our students. She's a product of Seminole County Public Schools. She's a product of this school where, where I'm at, where I've spent the last 20 years. So I would, again, I want to be her ally, I want to work with her, I want to support her. Again, but I'm going to hold her accountable, I'm going to be transparent. If there's things that I feel like she's not doing, that she needs to do a better, a better job of, I'm going to definitely call those out. And I'm going to speak truth and love, I'm not going to, I'm not going to back down. Because, and I think her heart's in the right place. Like I said, she's a product of these schools. I think she has, of course, she has the interest of this district. She wants to keep an A rating, she wants to keep everything going. She's doing a, doing a fine job of that now. And so, no, I would not vote against, against her right now, no.
Thank you for that, Ms. Dellinger. Same question.
Ms. Beaman became the superintendent in March of 2021, just as the district was beginning to emerge from the pandemic. And she hit the ground running with a 100 day plan. I was an assistant superintendent at the time, working with 20 elementary schools and was a member of her cabinet until I retired. I was a witness to her intense efforts to immerse herself in every area of operations in a very challenging time. And just as an aside, I was a teacher at Lake Mary High School for 12 years. And Ms. Beaman actually was a student long ago during that time. So I did not have her in my classroom. However, I have worked with her since she was hired back in 2004 and have had the opportunity to see her work ethic and her passion for the school district. And Deputy Tipton is right, you know, she was a student all the way from the beginning to the end of her education career in Seminole County, and obviously is a success story. But I believe her track record supports the fact that all of her efforts are having an impact. Seminole County was named an A district again recently, an academically high performing district. Our number of A schools increased and we had no D or F schools. She has brought new programs and opportunities to our district. The legislature has supported our cybersecurity program at Lakeview High School. We have a new potential one, Fire Academy at Winter Springs High School. And so I believe that her efforts show that things are working. Seminole County is the number one school district in STEM in the state of Florida. And it's number two among the largest school districts in the state. So I believe that I would evaluate her performance as very good. I would obviously vote to retain her. And I believe she has a really good team in place to continue the trajectory of the school district moving forward.
Thank you for that. Moving on to the next question, and this is something that, that Mr. Tipton has touched on quite a bit, but wanted to start with Ms. Dellinger on this one. What are your, what are your opinions on the current cell phone policy? Do you think that Seminole should adopt a blanket ban? Do you think that should be age appropriate or do you have other ideas?
Well, I think it's not as simple as adopting a policy because anybody knows that implementing it is where the challenges come about. And I recall about two years ago, we, we met with the communities in our various high school zones. And that was an issue even at that point in time. So what I do think is that we need to develop a policy. And I think we need to take the time to work with the community. There needs to be a process in place whereby we, whereby we receive input from parents, from students, from teachers, from principals, from law enforcement that is very vital in our schools, and come up with a policy that can be kind of a consensus policy. And then the challenge will be implementing it. What I don't want to see personally is it becoming another issue where we, we put another heavy load on administrators and they wind up spending all of their time, you know, chasing kids about cell phones. So we need to have a policy that is a workable policy and we need to clearly communicate it. We need to involve the entire community in the, in the development of it so that people can have buy into the policy. Because at the end of the day, you're going to have to implement it in the classroom, in the hallways. You're going to need parent support so that when you call them and say, hey, you know, Johnny is not following the rules here, the parent understands and supports the decisions of the school. So I think my, my belief is yes, we do need to, we do need a formal policy, but I think we need to take our time in developing it. We have plenty of parents that say, oh, I want my kid to have the cell phone. So how do we moderate all of that? By bringing people together to come up with something that we can, that, that all of the groups can live with and work with and support.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Tipton, I know you've talked a bit about your cell phone policy. I wondered if you could take a minute and respond to Ms. Dellinger about the, the problems of implementation and the problems of developing that policy.
Yes, yeah, no problem. Well, I mean, if you Google the Orange County Public Schools cell phone policy, there's going to be at least two news articles how they're having great success. You know, sexting's down, bullying's down, threats down, fights are down, socialization's up. I mean, they're, they're, so there's your, there's your, your, there's your study, your, your data, your development that it is working. It's real simple. When the, when the late bell rings, the phones go, they get shut off and put in a backpack. It don't come out again until the end of the day. There's a code red, yes, they can come out, text them, hey, I'm okay, no problem with that. If the teacher needs to use a cell phone in the classroom, boom, yes, teacher can do that. Here's the thing, we're putting too much on the teachers' plates for them to enforce cell phone policy the way we have it now, the, how it's, the bar's lowered, it's not, it's just too much on them. Just a broad, complete ban of cell phones during the school day. Anybody sees them out, whether it be a custodian, a principal, whoever, that kid gets sent to the discipline office. The phone gets taken away, the parent has to pick it up into the day, and that kid gets referral, cut and dry. You do, these cell phones are like a third arm for these kids. You do that one time, these, these phones won't be coming out, I promise you that. I think it actually will take the burden off of teachers, put less on their plates when we implement something like that. That is very strict and very, very streamlined. It's just, like I said, it's just too much on teachers. I think the studies show that it's working and I'm a big advocate of what's happening there in Orange County. And I would like to implement a similar policy in Seminole County. I see every day how these cell phones are disrupting our campus. I see it every day, all kinds of different ways, and we need to get those things in, under control.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for that. I wanted to jump to something that has been making a lot of headlines in the state. And the Seminole School Board has spent a lot of time hearing from the group Moms for Liberty. I'd like to both accept the impact that this group has had on the way Seminole County conducts its public business at school board meetings and how, and how it has affected the student experience in Seminole County schools. And we'll start with Mr. Tipton.
What group is this?
Moms for Liberty.
Okay, you know, I, I'm an advocate of any organization, any group, any parent that wants to come to our school board meetings. And, and if they have a concern, an issue or a problem, to bring it out at our school board meetings. Of course, I don't want any disruption, I don't want any, anything. And we, and we have that, we have our, our school board meetings for the most part under, under control. I'm not going to single out any group or organization. As a school board member candidate, I will meet with, talk to, do a Zoom call with, whatever, with any organization or any person that has a concern, issue or problem with our schools, whether they're the Moms for Liberty or Moms for Purple Skies. It's not, just because I meet with somebody to hear their concerns doesn't make me a member of that organization or a part of that organization. If there's, there's, we got brought, we got far left, far right, we got broad ends of our spectrums with different types of groups. All of them are, have a right to give their opinion and their say and voice their concerns, but not in a way that is going to disrupt or cause any disorder to our schools. Especially if there, if you got groups or members coming in, they aren't even part of our county. I don't know if this is true, but I've heard that some groups, not this one we're talking about, that are, that are bringing in people that aren't even from our county, that, that are like, that, to me, that you be, be part of our district, be part of our, our county, you have a concern or an issue, bring it to the forefront. But don't come if you're not part of our district or part of our county, leave that alone. You need to stay in your, take care of your district and your county, not, not ours. So there, that's what I have.
Ms. Dellinger, question.
Chris, could you, it was a little bit garbled coming through. Could you, could you restate your question, please?
I sure can. The school board has spent a lot of time hearing from the group Moms for Liberty. What impact has this group had on the way the school board does business and on the experience of students from Seminole County schools?
So I worked for the school district, you know, up until two years ago. And, you know, there were a couple of years there where we had very contentious school board meetings. I believe that our school board always handled them in a very professional manner, just even if they became heated. You know, they listen to everyone, anyone, everyone's entitled to make public comment. In recent times, that's been less of an issue, but I, I go to board meetings and make public comment. I think the issue with Moms for Liberty has been that their intention has been to create some chaos at our board meetings, particularly as it relates to books and banning books. And so I think that has not necessarily been productive. And I have spoken many times, as a matter of fact, and saying, you know, let's follow our process. We have policies and procedures, let's follow them. And so I think our board has been very professional in how they have listened to people and they are always going to listen to anyone that comes to make public comments. There's no discrimination against folks making comments at a school board meeting. So I think they should continue to do that. But I also think that they should continue to follow their policies. That's why we have them, so that every group or whoever, whatever opinion somebody has about something, they have the opportunity to voice their concerns. And then we look to the policy to guide, how do we respond to that? So I think, you know, that's a protection for every group so that everyone has an equal opportunity to communicate and to know that their issue or question will be approached in the same way as any other group. So I have to give kudos to our school board because they have been able to maintain a very civil atmosphere despite challenging questions and challenging circumstances. And I expect that that will continue and that that is their view on how we deal with listening to people who come to speak to us.
Thank you very much. One of the, another, another issue that, that always takes up a lot of time and discussion is the question of age appropriate sex education in schools. Do you think Seminole County is doing an adequate job of preparing kids who are becoming teenagers, who are going to be adults sometime very soon, for, for, with the information they need in the area of sex education? And we'll start with Ms. Dellinger.
I do believe that the school district is doing a fine job. You know, this is another area where there's a lot of opinions from people, from various walks of life and whatever. However, the Seminole County School Board has had the curriculum and followed the guidelines of the state for 20 plus more years without controversy. And this last year, that was the same. They use the same resources and they continue to do that. And so I think they will follow the guidelines that the state provides. They will stick with the requirements and then they will also make sure that, that our curriculum is implemented appropriately and listen to parents' concerns. Because if a parent has a concern about it, that's always been their ability to communicate that at the school level so that students could be excused. And so there's really, in my career with the county and the last part of it being at the school board office, as a principal and as an assistant superintendent, there were rarely concerns issued by parents about the curriculum. So I think Seminole County, that's the evidence there, that they have done a good job and that parents have been supportive of what they have done.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with, I would agree with Robin. I think our district has done an amazing job staying in line with, with this board of education, hands down, the curriculum from the Department of Education. I think, you know, we do a, do a fine job. I haven't, you know, my little microcosm here at the high school, I haven't I haven't come across any issues or problems, but I think it, there has to be a communication between parents and guardians and the school. There's got to be a I think it's a stronger role of the parent to educate their children on sexual issues. I'm a parent advocate. So I think it's really the job of the parent to do that. Let's be real, we're in an information age. Kids can access everything they needed access from the cellphone. So learning about sex education, a lot of times, I believe the kids nowadays are so much more advanced than we are in knowledge of gaining knowledge. And so I think that it's not as a not as a huge thing anymore, back then, 20 years ago, sex education than it is now. So again, I think it's, I think it's important to make sure that there's a buying with the parents. Make sure there's an opt-out. If there's, the parents can opt out if they don't agree with, or they see the curriculum, they see the lesson plans, they say, you know what, my kid's okay. So we got to, again, it's got to be that connection with the parent in the school when it comes in. I think that our district does a, does a fine job in that regard right now, so.
Thank you so much. We have run through more times than we had asked for before. But there is one more question I have to ask, because this is my favorite question. And it is something that never fails to make people smile. And Seminole County offers its students dozens of different options for rotational and career education. And do you think students across the county have adequate access to full array of programs? And are there any areas that you would like to be added? Or opportunities that you would like to expand it? And let's start with Mr. Tipton.
Yeah, that's the first pillar of my platform provision. I love what our district does with the CTE programs. Lyman is a hub of trades and all kinds of things. Every school has several programs of emphasis, but when I went to the school board meeting, excuse me, recently, they did awards for this, and I think it was like 12 awards, but only one was a trade diploma, automotive program from Seminole. Most were college tracks. Not every kid wants to go to college or military. We have like 20 to 30% of kids that don't. So I'm a big advocate of adopting the CTE trade diploma that the Department of Education offers in our, in our state. I want to adopt that. I would love to adopt that for every high school, partnering with local businesses and an apprenticeship. Fair and Electric, Strata AC. So a student their senior year can be part of this CTE trade diploma, can leave halfway through the day, go to a local business from whatever high school they're at. They don't have to transfer to Lyman. They can stay at the high school they've always wanted to graduate from, and they could go become an apprentice the senior year and work on that trade, that HVAC, that plumbing, that welding, these construction trades. Or even a esthetician, or LPN, or cosmetology, stuff like that. And then when they turn 18, sometime their senior year, they can actually work on the industry certification. So and then we celebrate these kids. At the end of the year, we put, we bring them into an auditorium, we set them up at a table, we we announce, hey, this young man or this young woman, they're halfway through their HVAC certification with Victory AC. We take pictures, we do a little signing. When they graduate, they're going to go work full-time with this company, and we celebrate them just like they're a Division One athlete. Because that's huge. In central Florida, the trades are huge with the construction, the building we have. So I'm a huge advocate on trying to get every high school, expanding our CTA, the CTE, we already do a wonderful job of, get that at every high school, trade diploma, partner with an apprenticeship, senior year, leaving halfway through the day, working on industry certification, and stepping out of high school right into an amazing trade.
You can see why. This is my favorite question. Ms. Dellinger, your turn to talk about it.
Well, I certainly agree that these opportunities should be available to students, and in fact, they are. Our school district has 53 different CTE programs across the district. Students can choose to go to those schools. They even have opportunity to go after the regular school day at their school to other programs in the district. The truth of the matter is, we have the 18-option diploma, and that students do take advantage of it. And we have students that leave for this in the afternoon, or whatever their schedule is, to work with businesses in apprenticeship-type programs. The truth is also that the CTE industry cert is sometimes the very baseline requirement prior to entering an apprenticeship program, and that many of those programs follow to Seminole State College. So we do have that articulation. So students can actually work in their field, earn a living, and continue their education if they choose. They may, they may not choose. Opening up new programs, a part of that is the function of the state of Florida, which requires that there be a need in a particular area in order for the districts to receive funding to operate those programs. And the truth of the matter is, they're very costly. If you go to Lyman High School, they have an incredible center for welding and electrical and building trades. However, you can't build those at every single school, right? There's the funding to support them isn't there. That's why we have the choice options in our county. I believe that one of the issues that we need to do a better job of is communicating what the opportunities are. I spoke with one of our principals just a couple of weeks ago, and he said, you know, we've got programs here that we offer that sometimes even kids in our school don't know that we offer them. So I think we can improve the understanding of what is available, because the options are almost endless for our students, whether they're on a apprenticeship track, whether they're on a dual enrollment track, or whatever it might be.
Thank you so much. I am going to, in just a minute, let you both make closing statements as to why people should choose you. And once again, there are so many questions we didn't get to, but I really appreciate you spending this time with us. But, and before we go to those closing statements, I did want to remind the people who are watching this video that the Orlando Sentinel will be making an endorsement in this race. But we don't want you to stop there. Both these candidates have a lot of information out there. They have both, both have websites, social media, just a wide array of information. There have been public forums, I think there will be a couple more. And, and of course, we're going to have our great coverage. And to take a look at both of them, decide who best represents your value for Seminole County School, and make sure that you vote on August 20. And with that, we'd like to go ahead and start with closing statements. I used a random generator to decide who would go first. And Mr. Tipton, that was you. So if you could just spend two minutes giving us your wrap-up pitch on why you should be the choice in this race.
Awesome. Thank you so much. 27 years, going on, going on my 27th year, boots on the ground in your schools. I started in 98 as a dare officer, teaching. Basically, I was a teacher, five different elementary schools, teaching the dare curriculum. Then I transitioned to School Resource Deputy Sheriff for many, many years at Lake Mary High School. My third role, I became a high school coach, longtime coach in the inner-city area of San Fran, but transitioned to high school girls and boys varsity coach. Then I became a teacher, high school teacher, two different high schools, two different subjects. Amazing time in these roles, especially elementary school, high school being a role model, a father figure, mentor. Just love my positions that I've been able to do in the schools. But because of the, because of this, I'm almost like an eyewitness into the schools. No one else can, can say that they are going on their concurrent in the 27 years of boots on the ground in a school, observing, seeing what's happening in our schools. I offer a fresh perspective. I offer a different perspective. I'm not from the district, I'm not from the establishment, not from the bureaucracy. I'm from a different walk of life, a different profession. And because of this, I was, I'm able to form these four things, these four pillars I think need to be worked on, fixed, or improved on in our schools. First one was provision. Big on a trade, providing a trade diploma with an apprenticeship, big on enhanced, out-of-the-box mentoring, partnering with nonprofits in the community. Man, we come from an age of fatherlessness, single-parent homes. Our kids need to be mentored more. And thirdly, our alternative learning environments. We got to make them more transformative and not a place where they're just serving time. Number two, discipline. We got to fix discipline to retain teachers. Enforcing the entire code of conduct, truancy task force, real credit denial, and enforcing the code of conduct in its entirety. Lastly, protection. Putting the school security guards under the supervision of a School Resource Deputy Officer, making sure we have an anti-bullying, no-repeat-bullying contact or contract, so kids that repeat bullying are sent to, or recommended for alternative school. And lastly, kids are violating their probation on campus, looking for, allowing a principal to have an easy path to transition to have to alternative school if they're not thriving, and they're not doing what they're supposed to do on their public schools with this. And when these measures enacted, parents are going to want to keep their kids in school. Teacher's morale is going to go up and they're going to stay, and kids are going to have character again, accountability, and attack the world as servant leaders. Thank you so much for having me today.
Thank you. And Ms. Dellinger, it's good to see you, and Mr. Tipton, we will wait for his time. So we will add time on the clock for you as well, about, about 10 and a half minutes.
Okay. I'm very passionate about and dedicated to Seminole County Public Schools. I worked and spent 34 years of my career as a parent, as a history teacher for a long time, an assistant principal, and a principal that actually was in charge of running schools. As we move into the future, I think there are many challenges that present opportunities for the district to innovate and to problem-solve, and to provide equitable opportunities, access, and a high-quality education for all students. My focus is on the students. I care about every student having the opportunity to receive that high-quality education, regardless of their circumstances. All those support mechanisms need to be in place to make that happen. I believe that every student should be safe and seen in their schools. I believe that students should be able to access instructional and library materials that they choose, and that every parent has the right to be engaged in these decisions for their child. I believe every student should learn in classrooms, where teachers develop relationships with them, and provide engaging, relevant, and rigorous learning opportunities. My belief is, our top priority is to keep our students safe and to keep them in school, not suspended from school, so that they can achieve their potential and graduate from high school ready to succeed in their adult lives. I support parent engagement in their child's education, and I believe we need to look for new ways to engage with parents in meaningful and positive ways. The world has changed, how we communicate has changed. People operate differently, so we've got to look to new ways to make sure that we are hearing what our community is concerned about, and responding with appropriate kinds of issues and programs. And I believe that we need to operate with transparency and to provide increased opportunities to engage with our parents. At the end of the day, I want our kids to come to school, and I want our parents to choose our schools, because they know we have a high-quality curriculum. We have all kinds of opportunities and pathways for students to go wherever they choose to go, and that we, as a district, are looking forward to saying, what is our community need, and how do we, as a school district, meet those kinds of needs? So all of those things are important, but at the end of the day, what our kids need is to learn, be successful, and it happens in the classroom, because we've established the environment for it to happen there.
Thank you so much, and we wish you both the absolute best of luck.